I mean, you look at, Karema's gonna need something, sweater. Karema, you probably gonna need a sweater. It's cold in here, it's cold. Ooh. Okay.
Third substitute?
Mm-hmm.
Can we have hard copy?
Yes, you can give every costume for someone. Okay. Okay. No yawn, no yawn. All right. Karen?
We're going for a break.
Well, it depends how the costume was assigned.
But remember, the grand has to see the best first.
On the other side. He must be watching. It's eight o'clock. Okay. Who knew? I don't feel that way.
Where ya?
You're smart, but not if they have these down the line. You got one minute. You got one minute? Is it seven? Is it seven? Is it time to go? Okay. I got one minute, okay. Paul Salon, okay. You got one minute. It's ready to go. Welcome to the July 22nd, 2019 meeting of the South Bend Common Council. I do ask that you turn off your electronic devices or place them in the silent mode at this particular time. I'm happy to welcome to the podium Reverend Matt Largary, the Senior Pastor, First United Methodist Church, who will give us our invitation at this time.
Well, thank you, thank you for this opportunity to lead us in prayer. Tonight, I come representing church family of hundreds of people from the soup kitchen, the food pantry, the upper room recovery ministry, so I'm glad to offer prayer on their behalf as well tonight. So, I'm not offering prayer in the Christian tradition, but I invite you to pray in whatever tradition you feel comfortable in, so let us pray together. Holy God, we thank you for the many blessings of our South Bend community. And tonight, God, we especially pray for those who are in the offices that govern this community and county, and pray that they would make wise decisions, which are always in the best interests of this community, and decisions that bring equality and justice for all people. Together, God, we also pray for those who serve our city, as well as prayer for families and schools and our faith community. And you have found, God, in the beautiful diversity in our city, so help us to embrace this and celebrate this, for it is a gift that you have given us. Help us to receive it as the gift that it is. We pray for peace on our streets, reconciliation between neighbors, and may you give us the grace to listen to one another, and then to work together to build a community where everyone feels safe, loved, and wanted here. Help us to create a place where everyone has sound employment, a roof over their heads, stomachs filled with goodness, and hearts filled with love, for this is a vision of your kingdom and our prayer for this city. May it be so. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Now, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to going directly into our meeting, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for Jeff Cantone, the Code Inspector, who passed unexpectedly after celebrating his 20th year anniversary with the city at this time. Moment of silence. Thank you. I would like to also enter into the record just some brief comments regarding Inspector Jeff, who passed away on Thursday. He was a valued and deeply loved member of the code enforcement. He was quite simply a big-hearted teddy bear. He recently, as I stated earlier, celebrated 20 years of service with the city. Jeff was a proud graduate of Roddy High School and Eleanor State University. He was voted the most valuable lineman, all-state lineman, and was given a full-rite scholarship to Eleanor State University. He will be truly missed by his family, his fellow workers, and friends. We do ask that you keep his family in prayers and thoughts during this very difficult time. Clerk Fowler, would you please give us roll call?
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Teschel?
Here.
Councilmember Davis has an excused absence. Councilmember Boardy?
Here.
Councilmember Furlik has an excused absence as well. Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott has an excused absence as well.
Thank you. We'll now move to special business. I will ask our city clerk to read a letter from Councilmember President Tim Scott, recognizing our interns and wishing them the very best as they return back to college.
I would like to recognize our council interns, Morgan, Chanita, David, Ryan, and Ryan, for their excellent work helping this common council inform our residents of the work we do on a daily basis. I appreciate each and every one of you and your individual talents you have brought to the county council and the clerk's office, but it was a team that you, the four of you, excel. I want to thank you for your work on the council's social media, the personal videos of the common council members helping out with events, and your detailed data mining. All the PR only telling our story, informing citizens, and making us look good. I wish you all the best of luck in what you do. Please stay in touch, and you are always welcome here. Thank you again for all the work that you've done.
Thank you as well.
And I'd like to thank you all as well. It has been a joy to work with you all. I remember first starting the internship program. You guys are our second core cohort of paid interns, and we hope it has been as wonderful for you as it's been for us, so thank you guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you. And Clerk Fowler, do you wish to make any other comments at this time?
Not at this time, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the Committee of the Whole. I would like to let the record note that reports from the city offices representing the city this evening will be Laura Sullivan. Thank you so much. I intend to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
Say it.
As a move and second it. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the clerk will read the items on the agenda. Members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition of the items, and the comments, their comments, will be limited to five minutes. With that, will the clerk please read 1519, please?
1519. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 3, Commercial/Mix-Use District, to repeal and replace Section 21-03-06, CBD Central Business District.
I move that we accept the third substitute version of 1519.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is the third substitute that we will consider. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Jordan Wyatt.
Excuse me, yeah. I chaired the zoning and vacation committee earlier that considered this bill, and we sent it to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thanks. Jordan Wyatt, Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth, offices on the 11th floor of this building. The petitioners are proposing an ordinance to repeal and replace the CBD Central Business District. This ordinance was drafted to simplify regulations and simulate development in the heart of South Bend. Experience using this ordinance's provisions for the Central Business District has shown that the development in this district is unable to meet its full potential through efficient use of sites and development standards to better support a vibrant public realm. The new CBD district seeks to promote a high-intensity urban center with a mix of mid-rise and high-rise mixed-use developments and pedestrian-oriented scale. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. And I'll refer to DCI to elaborate further.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael DeVita, Principal Planner with the City Department of Community Investment Offices on the 14th floor of this building. So, typing, just a reminder on the CBD district that you see here, the center part of our city representing the downtown. So, similar to other quick-fix ordinances that we've completed in the last three years, DCI audited the existing CBD district standards to ensure they're aligned with the community's goals and did not deter investment. So, as a result of that audit, few changes are proposed to remove walkable mixed-use development through a more straightforward code. These changes are like the reformed MU district standards that the council adopted last year and have been used successfully since. So, one thing that ordinance accomplishes is that full utilization of land downtown where it's most valuable, so by revising setbacks and buffer yards, proposed amendments will allow property owners to more fully use their properties where it doesn't negatively affect neighboring properties. The ordinance also clarifies existing provisions, so the changes will assist in administration of the ordinance by clarifying outdoor operations and other provisions. And finally, adds basic urban design principles. The building design and orientation standards presented here would codify the existing downtown design guidelines. They're easily achievable, but ensure strong design outcomes in urban contexts and would add to the vibrancy of downtown. The changes were developed in conjunction with an urban design professional and were vetted by developers, builders, architects, real estate professionals, and other interested parties. And for the record, since we took up the third substitute here tonight, those changes were to clarify the calculation of the facade falling in the min and max setback zone should be done in plan view, that the river race setback that we're introducing here is along end adjacent to those waterways. And then, we changed the HVAC equipment requirements, so that the same requirement that applies to a front facade or a front yard, but also applied to facade facing the river, and it allows HVAC in that location to be there if it's properly screened. So, I would ask for your approval, but I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Then we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in support of this bill?
Jesse Davis, Peel Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So, I support, you know, making some changes to better the downtown area, but I do have a question when they look at all this, especially setbacks and things of that nature, facades. I'm assuming that includes walkways and entries. Did they look at ADA compliant rules for that stuff? Because right now, we do have an issue downtown where they have outdoor dining in some areas that is almost impossible to traverse and get through if you're using a walker or someone that might be in a wheelchair, things of that nature. And I know we've talked about it before, and I'll be honest, I've been downtown recently and walked through, and in a couple of areas, I think I'll bring a wheelchair downtown and I'll shoot a live video that y'all can watch on social media, and you can see how difficult it is to maneuver some of those areas where they have the outside restaurants. So, if we're going to make changes for things like this, we need to make sure that we're taking into consideration people that are handicapped and have to use some type of appliance to get around.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse. We'll have Community Investment respond to that. You don't really need to get your own wheelchair, just follow my daughter around. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the bill? Anyone speaking in opposition to this bill? And we'll go back to the council portion or actually give Community Investment the opportunity to address that ADA compliance?
And I guess that the part where ADA comes in is in the outdoor operations. Does say any outdoor operations such as seating should not block an entrance or exit to or from the business or conflict with ADA standards. We'll additionally note the zoning through its whole application applies to properties, so when it's on a public sidewalk that actually falls under the purview of the board of public works, we want to reinforce those standards, but in the technical sense for any public sidewalk falls under their jurisdiction, the ADA being a federal law would obviously trump anything that we propose here.
Who would monitor compliance?
Generally through the part of public work, or if it's on, in the public driveway.
So, if someone found what they considered a violation, to whom would they report it? 311?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I think so. I move to send the third substitute, 1519, to the full council favorably.
Motion made and seconded to send third substitute 1519 to the council favorably. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, goes to council favorably. Will the clerk please read 2019, please?
2019. A public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, supplementing and amending ordinance number 993709 for the purpose of authorizing a modification of certain contractual rights of the city, the execution and delivery of its amended Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2009, Series B, and approving certain related matters in connection therewith.
Committee report?
Yes, Personnel and Finance held a committee meeting and second reading on Bill 20-19. We sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Hi, Councilman Parker, City Controller. Offices are up on the 12th floor of this building. All right, so Bill 2019 is addressing a water bond refunding opportunity. Back in November of 2009, the city issued Water Works Revenue Bonds, Series B. Total amount of the bond issued was $5.38 million. Those bonds back in 2009 were purchased in full by the Indiana Bond Bank, and the way the Indiana Bond Bank worked that program is they issued their own bonds to fund the purchase of our bonds, as well as the purchase of several of bonds from several other municipalities. Our original 2009 bonds contained a call provision, which allowed the cities to put the city to call our bonds after 10 years, and it is 10 years after our 2009 issue, so under our current arrangement, we would have the right to call our bonds starting November 2019. In advance of that call opportunity, the Indiana Bond Bank, which again does own all of these bonds, contacted the city and let us know that they also have a call provision on their bonds that they issued at the same time, meaning they are going to be able to call their bonds starting in November as well, and they are intending to exercise that provision and refund their bonds in order to take advantage of the lower interest rates that we currently see in the market. The bond bank proposed sharing a portion of the savings that they're going to receive from that bond refunding with the city, and in exchange, they are asking the city to waive the call rights on our bonds, which are owned by the bond bank. From this refunding opportunity, or from the savings rather, that we would share in from the bond bank for, in exchange for giving up our call rights, the schedule on there shows all of the payments that we intend to make from now, or from 2020 through 2030. The total amount of the savings in principal and interest would be about $1.1 million for this opportunity. We believe that the modification of call rights is a preferable way, rather than calling the bond ourselves and refunding them directly. The present value of the savings from each of those two different options is roughly equal, but modifying the call rates allows us to save in bond issuance costs, because the issuance costs for the bond bank will be issuing, are going to be shared between the bond bank, as well as us and the two other municipalities that are participating in the program, not to mention the reduction in staff time, because the bond bank will be issuing the bond themselves rather than us having to spend the staff time to do it. Happy to answer any questions in council.
Council questions? Okay, we'll go to the council, I mean, the public portion. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of this bill? Anyone liking the opportunity to speak opposed to it? Back to the council? I move that Bill 2019 be sent to the full council favorably.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 2019 to council favorably. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, goes to council favorably. Will the clerk please read 2119, please?
2019. A public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending various articles of section of Chapter 5 of the South Bend Municipal Code, generally known as the Responsible Animal and Pet Ownership Care and Control Regulations by updating entity names, definitions, and manager responsibilities.
A motion to hear the second substitute?
Okay. Second. Second. Motion made and seconded to hear the second substitute version of 2119. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now, committee report?
The Health and Public Safety Committee met earlier today and sent this favorable to the full council.
Thank you. Presentation?
Good evening, my name's Jamie Morgan. I'm with the mayor's office. It's my privilege today to be able to introduce these name changes to Chapter 5. I'm joined today by Marlena Johns, our Deputy Director of Code Enforcement, and Jen Goble, our current Shelter Manager. So, I'm going to do the same committee report that I did earlier today for the benefit of those that have joined us this evening. All right, so really, what's in a name? When we look at animal welfare, we really have to consider what our words mean and the power that they have behind them. So, if you take a cute puppy like this, you probably want to give it a name like Happy so that it has a chance to get adopted, other than a name like Stinky that might be a little bit more accurate once you get a little closer to him. So, talking about shelters in general, we need to understand that there's a lot of stigma when it comes to these facilities and agencies. Animal sheltering has a really solid history, and we've done a lot over the last years at our shelter to really try to overcome that, but nationwide, this has also been the trend. So, when you think of an animal shelter, you probably think of things like barking dogs, litter boxes that need to get changed, paws reaching through cages, and it's generally a pretty sad environment. But in reality, the animal shelter that we run has a place for a lot of happy endings and new beginnings, as you can see by our happy adopters on the screen here. So, when you think of South Bend Animal Care and Control, you might not think that this is the sort of place that you can adopt a pet, or you can volunteer with your family, where you could donate a bag of squeaky toys, or reunite with a missing dog. These are all things that are good, and good things happen at our shelter. So, the public perception of our facility really impacts how people interact with our city services and how they use them. And we really want to signal that our doors are open to provide resources to the pets and people within our community. So, we've signaled a lot of this change through our success indicators. Over the last few years, staff have really embraced a culture of community care that has saved and enhanced more lives than ever. So, looking at the way that people interact with our services, we've seen growth in adoptions, transfers out to rescues, which have a positive impact on our live release rate. We've seen missing pets reunited with owners increase, and the amount of licenses that we're able to keep active year to year continues to grow steadily. Our staff has done a tremendous amount of work rebuilding community trust and building it in other places, and we really want to show our commitment to high-quality animal services within our community. But there's still more work that needs to be done. We need to attract more adopters so that we can get more animals adopted out. We need to appeal to larger funders so that we can get more support financially for our shelter, and we need to continue to build trust within our community. So, an organization's brand is their voice, and we want to use our voice to reflect this new positive direction and open the door for the shelter to grow even more. So, with this, we're coming to you with a brand-new logo and a brand-new motto and really emphasize what it is our mission and values are. So, the city of South Bend operates what's commonly referred to as open-door admission shelter. This means that we don't place qualifications or restrictions on the animals that we admit. We're open to serve residents of fur, feathers, scales, and tails. Anything that comes through our doors, we're responsible to find a way for them to have a positive outcome. Because we can't control what comes through our open doors, we must match these open doors with an open heart. The perceptions of shelters being sad places with helpless animals was built on a lack of empowerment. The shift to being a resource center signals that we are ready to be a place that will empower people to care for animals in our community. In order to promote compassionate animal attitudes in the community, we need to shift the way that we talk about the city services that we provide for animals. So, our vision is to improve the welfare of animals through resources that we offer, and our name really needs to reflect this. So, with the rebranding, we have five proposed name changes that are throughout the ordinance, which makes the ordinance a little bit hefty of a read to go through, because those are terms that are found throughout the document. So, South Bend Animal Care and Control would be known as the South Bend Animal Resource Center, and this would be the physical shelter on Eclipse Place. The South Bend Animal Control Commission, which has appointees from both the mayor's office and council, would be the Animal Welfare Commission. The Shelter Manager role becomes the Animal Resource Manager role under the Division of Animal Welfare, who is over the Animal Welfare Officers that are out in the community. So, we feel as though this name change really reflects where we're going as a shelter. And as you can see, the organizational chart remains the same, so there's no changes that we have with personnel or how things are organized. It is only in name, but this will reflect positively towards the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any council questions?
I have one, I should probably two questions, maybe, maybe comments. Just for the sake of clarification, again, because there's been a lot of chatter on social media and in the paper and whatnot, the bill, the substitute version of this bill, second substitute version of this bill that we're going on tonight, simply deals with name changes and not microchipping or few tables or any of that sort of thing, correct?
Exactly.
Awesome. Secondly, it's probably a comment, next time, if that stuff comes back, it'd probably go a long way if you brought puppies for us to hold. Thank you, Jim.
I can throw some kittens in there, too.
Oh, where's it?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, at committee, you addressed the question about the rollout and where the funds would come from for this and timing, so if you could please, for the public?
So, this will be more of a soft rollout. We can do some things for free, like updating our website immediately. We already are in a position in which we need to buy new uniforms, so it would just be buying them with the new name, so that we're responsible with the funds that we're provided with. The way that the budgeting works for the animal shelter is that all of the funds that go to care for the animals are limited to that purpose, and so no funding for the administrative overhead for these name changes and rebranding would come out of what has already been budgeted for the animal care.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions from council? If not, we'll go to the public portion. Anyone here to speak in support of this bill? Anyone wishing to speak opposed to the bill? Back to the council.
I'll move that 2119 be sent to the full council favorably.
Second substitute?
Second substitute, 2119.
Okay, motion made and seconded, the second substitute, 2119. Go to council favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, goes to council favorably. One more item on the agenda. Will the clerk please read 2319?
2319. Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2019, $500,000, from economic development tax, I mean, income tax, Fund Number 408.
Committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting-
The South Bend Animal Control Commission, which has appointees from both the mayor's office and council, would be the Animal Welfare Commission. The shelter manager role becomes the Animal Resource Manager role under the Division of Animal Welfare, who is over the animal welfare officers that are out in the community. So we feel as though this name change really reflects where we're going as a shelter. And as you can see, the organizational chart remains the same. So there's no changes that we have with personnel or how things are organized. It is only in name, but this will reflect positively towards the community. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any council questions?
I have one. I should probably two questions, maybe, maybe comments. Just for the sake of clarification, again, because there's been a lot of chatter on social media and in the paper and whatnot, the bill, the substitute version of this bill, the second substitute version of this bill that we're going on tonight, simply deals with name changes and not microchipping or feet tables or any of that sort of thing, correct?
Exactly.
Awesome. Secondly, it's probably a comment. Next time, if that stuff comes back, it'd probably go a long way if you brought puppies for us to hold.
[laughter]
Thank you.
I can throw some kids in there, too.
Oh, where's it?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
So at committee, you addressed the question about the rollout and where the funds would come from for this and timing. So if you could please, for the public.
So this will be more of a soft rollout. We can do some things for free, like updating our website immediately. We already are in a position in which we need to buy new uniforms, so it would just be buying them with the new name so that we're responsible with the funds that we're provided with. The way that the budgeting works for the animal shelter is that all of the funds that go to care for the animals are limited to that purpose, and so no funding for the administrative overhead for these name changes and rebranding would come out of what has already been budgeted for the animal care.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions from council? If not, we'll go to the public portion. Anyone here to speak in support of this bill? Anyone wishing to speak opposed to the bill? Back to the council.
I'll move that 2119 be sent to the full council favorably.
Second substitute.
Second substitute.
Okay, motion made and seconded, the second substitute, 2119. Go to council favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed goes to council favorably. One more item on the agenda. Will the clerk please read 2319?
2319. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2019 of $500,000 from economic development tax, I mean, income tax, fund number 408.
Committee report, please.
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill, and we send it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening again, council members. Dan Parker, City Controller, Office is on 12. This bill is for an additional appropriation of $500,000 from our economic development income tax specifically designated for additional streets projects. The list of additional streets projects that are going to be funded through this additional appropriation was sent out to council members about four times a week. And there are nine, nine projects proposed with two alternates depending on where bids come back in and how much we're able to fund. The list was developed specifically based on Pacer ratings and looking at the streets in the city that needed to be redone on that basis. We funded it from economic development income tax specifically. This is a spend down from reserves that we have on hand, and that fund is, well, is definitely able to maintain adequate cash balance even with this additional appropriation. Happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the projects or appropriations.
Thank you, Dan. Council questions?
Other than that impact on the economic development income tax, what will that reserve percentage be?
So the reserve percentage, let me pull it up real quick. I can get you the actual dollar amount and percentage here in a second, but there is a pretty substantial balance in that fund, and income taxes of the last several years have been higher than anticipated, meaning we've been kind of growing the balance of that fund. And it does make sense to spend down when you have additional streets projects. And let me pull up the additional for the actual dollar amount.
And my, just follow up. Did your office identify that high percentage and that ability to spend down?
And that, partially, yes. So that's sort of been a theme of several reports that we've made before council is that our cash reserves are very strong currently, which is good, and we want to make sure we maintain that because it's very important for bond ratings and for many reasons for us to have strong cash reserves, particularly for future years where income tax may not be as strong as it has been over the past several years. So we want to make sure we maintain that. But that being said, we want to make sure that when there is an opportunity, that we're not just sitting on money, especially if there's need out there in the community. And I can follow up in writing on the specific percentage, too, just to make sure I don't want to give you the wrong number.
And I guess I'd just like to comment in terms of responsiveness to council. This has been mentioned a number of times, and we're just reflecting our community's desires and needs, so I'm really happy that whomever was responsible, that we saw this as an opportunity and now have the chance to vote on its approval tonight.
And really, it came together because of council members and specifically Vice President White. I know that you identified this as well as other council members. So thank you to you for identifying the need and for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? Okay, then we'll move to the public portion. Anyone here wishing to speak in support of this appropriation bill?
Jesse Davis, Peel the Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So obviously, anytime we can find some extra funding for street projects, a great thing because many people have been complaining how horrendous the streets are. Is there any way we can get a list of the six streets or projects, or eight, or whatever it was he said they were going to do, so we have an idea of what they're going to spend the money on?
Thanks, Jesse. Mr. Parker, do you know if that's online now?
Aye. I don't believe it's online yet, but yes, we can put that on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the additional half-million-dollar appropriation? Anyone opposed to the bill? Then we'll go back to the council portion.
Move to send this favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the bill 2319 has received a motion and a second to go to council favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed goes to council favorably.
I move that Lee Horizon is off from the panel.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so done.
The full council is back in session. This is the session where our bills will be given a third reading at this time. City Clerk Fowler, would you please give bill 15-19 a third reading?
1519. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article III, Commercial Mixed Use Districts to repeal and replace section 21-03-06, CBD Central Business District.
I'd like to entertain a motion to hear the third substitute version as amended in the committee with a whole.
So moved.
It's been moving seconded at this time. Roll call.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teska.
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Third substitute bill 1519 has been passed. Will you please give third reading to bill 20-19?
2019. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, supplementing and amending ordinance number 9937-09 for the purpose of authorizing the modification of certain contractual rights of the city, execution and delivery of its amended Waterworks Revenue Bond of 2009 Series E, and approving certain related matters in connection therewith.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding bill 20-19.
Move for passage. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teska.
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Bill 20-19 is passed. City Clerk Fowler, would you please give third reading to bill 21-19?
2119. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various articles and sections of chapter five of the South Bend Municipal Code, generally known as Responsible Animal and Pet Ownership Care and Control Regulations by updating entity names, definitions, and manager responsibilities.
I'd like to entertain a motion to hear the second substitute of this bill.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving seconded. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding the second substitute version of bill 21-19.
Move for passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teska.
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Six ayes.
The second substitute version of bill 21 has been passed. City Clerk Fowler, would you please give third reading to bill 23-19?
23-19. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2019 of $500,000 from economic development, income tax, fund number 408.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding this bill.
Move for passage. Second.
City Clerk Fowler, would you please give the roll call?
Councilmember Teska.
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Bill 23-19 has been passed. There are no resolutions before us. We'll now go to bill's first reading. City Clerk Fowler, would you please give first reading to bill 22-19?
2219. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter six, article one, section six, four of the South Bend Municipal Code to require payment of all past permit inspection fees and compliance, all applicable zoning ordinance prior to the issuance of a permit, of a building permit, except certain building permits used in accordance with the law prior to effective date of this amended ordinance.
I'd like to entertain a motion regarding bill 22-19.
I move that 2219 be sent to the Amending Actuation Committee for second reading and public hearing on August 12.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Please give first reading to bill 24-19.
2419. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code by repealing current chapter 20, article 13, and the inclusion of the new chapter 20, article 13, entitled Regulations on the Use of Handheld, Mobile, or Wireless Phones, Electronic Communication Devices, and Communication Devices While Driving.
I'll now entertain a motion regarding bill 24-19.
I move that this bill be sent to the Health and Public Safety Committee for their second reading and public hearing on August 12.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Please give first reading to bill 25-19.
25-19. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2019 of $180,000, $180,070 from the general fund number 101.
Third motion.
Move that 2519 be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee for second reading and public hearing on August 12.
Second.
So we move and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We'll now move to unfinished business. I don't believe that we have any unfinished business. If not, we'll move now to new business. Councilmembers, do you have any new business you would like to share at this time?
Just a comment on item 2419 on the handheld mobile or wireless telephones. It'll be the intent of the Health and Public Safety Committee to try to convene a meeting in advance of the second and third reading. So I'll be working with the clerk's office to have a separate standalone meeting on the topic.
I don't know that this is new business, or what, but I think that we, as a council, would be remiss if we didn't somehow recognize Clerk Fowler on this, which would be her last council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, as clerk. And so I, for one, appreciate all that she's done for me on my short time on council and the way that she has led her team, the clerk's office, and all of its duties. I'm sure there'll be a resolution in there somewhere. If not, I'm calling for one now. But.
Of course, sponsor.
Yeah. There will be a formal recognition of our city clerk, Fowler, as she takes this next journey in her educational and professional life. We do wish her very best, and once that date has been set, we will formally recognize our city clerk. But in the meantime, we wish her the very best. It has been a joy working with you, your staff, and I know that the South Bend Community School Corporation is receiving a great leader. Thank you so much.
As long as we're in the congratulatory mode, I think we should congratulate Jitin Kane for being named the new director of the Community Investment Department.
And in way of announcement, on July 29, the Residential Neighborhood Committee will be having a meeting at the Charles Black Center in regards to pulling together key neighborhood associations to begin to talk about investment, but also to hear from the citizens. During the last six months, we've heard a lot of comments or suggestions have been made that we need to really focus on the West Side. This is the beginning of those conversations, and we'll be following up with other neighborhood associations in the sixth and the third districts. So those will be coming up, but the first one will be Monday, July 29, at the Charles Black Center from 5:30 till 7:30. Additional information will be placed on our website. We'll now move to privilege of the floor. This is the time that anyone in the audience, you'll have opportunity to come before the council to talk about or to make comments about any items that have not been discussed on our agenda. You will have three minutes, and Councilmember John Boardy will keep time. Anyone wishing to come and to approach the council under privilege of the floor? We do ask that you state your name and address, please.
Samuel Brown, 222 East of R. C. South Bend. I noticed the city's been overwhelmed by gunshots, people losing their lives, and I wondered when you tried to be positive on this, what are we going to do with the city because these guns, because these happen real quick. And we're having a lot of meetings by church thing, and the leaders ain't working. They're not working. I'm out there every day, and I'm one, I did something that day that I told my wife I wouldn't do. I took my firearm back out because I want my family to stay. And I'm not, I'm not going to just be one of them people that talk about it because this is getting out of hand. Every other day, we're re-inmissioned to this. We left game plan. We got into the game plan for my leadership, I tell you, from the common council, to the police, to the mayor's office, go forward. This is serious out there. I'm out there every day. Every day, midnight, early in the morning, they have no regard for our citizens alive. And I say this truth, it's a big thing. We cannot stand by and let these thugs take our city like we want. And I'm going to struggle with people, not with a group that always don't use talk, ever solutions. And I was raised in the streets, and I swore to my wife I would never ever do that, like I told her. I don't think I can take it if I come home and one of my loved ones is shot up. I couldn't live with myself. So I'm willing to go and talk to people that really got solutions. I'm willing to do that, but I'm not going to be one to stand back and let my family be in danger. Nobody could do me any good, and I've been proved about in my good house, did this to you, you know? I wrote your.
Thirty seconds, please.
No problem. I wrote your prosecutor letter, and if you get a letter, he got it today. I don't have the answers, but like I said, I'm asking for solutions. We've got too many good people in our city to let this go on.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Joseph Jones, 605 North River Avenue, Council Manic, District Number Five.
Can you speak a little bit closer to the mic? Thank you.
Yes. I hate to break it to the guy that's spoken before us, but I don't think that there's really, the majority of what needs to be done to stop what's happening in the community isn't going to come from the government. People have to look at their neighbor, or look at somebody that lives two blocks away or even in a different neighborhood, and understand that even among us in this room, everybody's trying to just live, make a living, raise a family, be out of family, whatever the case is. People just have to look at each other and be able to resolve their differences without always coming to some body. There's nine people on this council. There's one mayor, right? Like, this isn't the most gigantic body in the history of mankind, so I don't know that all the answers lie, and that's not an attack on you guys, but I don't think the answer's lying here. As far as why I mentioned, I said Council Manic District, I noticed that the clerk always refers to you guys as council member when you do roll call. And I've noticed that in the agendas, when there's a district specifically with projects before it, it's referred to as Council Manic, which is from, obviously, the root term, Council Manic. Jake talked about social media. I saw a ridiculous story this week, or what seemed ridiculous at the time, that in California, people were upset about calling manholes manholes. But then I stopped and thought about it, and I realized that words do matter, and making sure that whether it's men and women, whether it's LGBTQ, or racial, anything, that everybody is treated equal under the law. And I don't think that that's happening in this city, which is evidenced by something that I talked about on social media that other people in my neighborhood association area know about, which is in property on South Michigan Street. area know about, which is in property on South Michigan Street, where there's prostitution activity that goes on regularly and openly, which was brought to my attention by somebody that I know that used to work at Low Bonds right across the street. And I wanted to state that for the record while it was law enforcement. With that, I'll yield back whatever time I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Jesse Davis, Peel Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So, I came to the meeting tonight because of the appropriation of funds. When I went online and looked at the agenda prior to coming to the meeting, I noticed that. And I came up many times asking questions about, you know, when funds are moved from one place to another. So tonight was a prime example to me of what we really don't like to see out of you people as our elected officials, to pass the appropriation before the public has an opportunity to even see the list of the streets that they're going to fix. It's kind of put in the cart before the horse. We'd like to know what it is they're going to spend the money on before you guys approve it and pass it to give them money to spend. So I'm just kind of bringing that to your attention, that it was a prime example of what we come up and question about. And I get this is the normal, you know, the way they do it, but, so you're passing appropriations for a half a million dollars. It sounds great, they're going to fix streets, but what if there are streets that, you know, are questionable? Maybe it's a street in front of somebody's house that really wasn't in that bad a shape, and we got worse streets. So it'd be really nice if we could see what streets you're going to spend that money on before you approve the spending. That's all my point is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, would I entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Motion carries. Thank you.